I just want to be the first branch to not be in the bill.
Good job.
You must have not read me.
I won't try like back.
That's not the first.
Going around here. First news.
Uh, blowing up the habit.
Okay, we can start picking your.
It's official.
Special.
We can send you on.
I need to talk to you about that. That's important.
I'll be around.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, I didn't probably get like.
I think I was getting a very, very.
Very.
Oh, yeah.
She was a little. I'm sure he was. I was always. We did that one. I need your little lines, Carter.
Yeah. Was that really? What's your hard part? It's fine. Says make watch the way they're. They're still colored.
Come on.
Yeah.
Right up the wall.
Yeah.
What did you say?
There's one.
All right, let's go ahead and take. Let's follow the meeting order and start the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to my flag. And I can add states of the American. And it's different. And it's all.
Wait.
Like a few addresses.
Welcome everybody. Uh, Mark Dolan could not be here today. His grandmother is in the hospital in Des Moines, uh, not feeling good. Um, very ill, so I will run the meeting today. Um, so let's start out and can I get a motion approved agenda?
So.
We got a motion, can I get started? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, let's go ahead into public comments. It's time to set aside for public comments, some county business topics. If you recognize, raise your hand or stand after recognition by myself. State your name and where you live. You may speak one time per issue. If the comment is for an item not on the agenda, please understand the board supervisors will not act on your comments at this meeting. Do the open, open being some longer requirements. But they do have a meeting on the agenda. The chair and board members welcome comments from the public.
Got it, but I have no audio.
Directed to the board and not others in attendance. Keep your comments germane is not appropriate to use profane, obscene or slanderous language. No personal tax and the chairman and the speaker to three minutes. We got no audio, is James working out? I got our man on.
Sounds good here.
Sounds good. Can you guys hear it on the phone now?
I've got the picture, but I don't have any audio.
Maybe trying to hang up or trying right back in.
He's not muted. Is he unmuted?
Yeah. Yeah, but they're on mute because we don't want to hear.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We're not muted.
He's speaking on the microphone.
Sure. All right, well, keep looking for public comments. Any public comments?
Oh.
Yes, Jim?
Jim, good Toledo. Last of the. At last, we had these. Per today. But you, uh, brought up the. If you have experience for vehicles.
Although we're up for the.
Yeah. Yeah, and I just wondered sometimes. I'd be like.
You might.
I fear elaborate on it a little bit. You know, why it's a concern. I just like knowing more information about it.
People.
What your concern is.
Please react.
Well, um. I guess the, uh, the aging part of it.
Laura's over here.
I don't know for reaching far enough or if we're, what we're doing.
We moved me from gallery.
Working.
Everyone.
So. There's been talk about maybe combining them with the other. Uh. Yeah, that's not.
Wheels on wheels, what is it?
Well, I mean, wheels for the employees when they go out.
Oh, 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 that was.
That.
Oh.
Oh. Is that what you're talking about?
No.
No, I don't think we've talked about it. Or meals.
I didn't know what it would be. Now.
Well, I know it's been mentioned like with the shortfall in the budget. This call, don't need to go out and do reels for their meetings and stuff to just not do that.
Permission to access your camera.
I'm trying to.
Whoever's talking.
Somebody, if there's somebody's talking.
They should be all. Let's keep going. Yep, so that was pretty much it, Jim. Just trying to, trying to save money where we can. If you don't have to go do things, you know, obviously we want important critical trainees to be done, but if they can try to save money.
Thank you for that right now.
Yeah, okay.
And for clarification, if we can't buy who using county money for employees, then we can. Or how. If you need to.
All right, anybody else?
Suggestion. The tower needs to be higher up to view everybody in the.
No, it does not. It's Karen, no, it does not.
You know.
It's.
All right.
No, I know.
Yeah.
Right, we'll, we'll get some work. We kind of mentioned before the meeting, we are hiring an IT person now. So this was the cheapest option that a couple counties gave to like, let's get it going at least. But we will definitely get some improvements. We'll get some better microphones. You know, we'll figure out if this isn't going to work. We can use other, using another. Right, things like that, so bear with us, trying to at least stick out there publicly, but just there.
Just nobody wants to look at it. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it's too bad that it can't just look this way. That'd be hopeless.
Perfect.
So.
You guys can work on it. Don't.
Yep, we'll work on it. Anybody else? Okay, let's, uh, close public comments. Uh, let's go into discussion approved March 3rd, 2025 minutes. Can I get a motion?
A motion minutes, top second.
All right, we got a motion in a second. Any discussion or amendments on the minutes?
Aye.
All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the minutes? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, motion passes. Uh, Ben, engineer road projects report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, so last week before kind of the snow bit, we also rock early in the week. Uh, and also did some, uh, took some sand to trailer. Uh, our mix shed in Toledo is full now. Um, we also did a little bit of brush cutting in areas, uh, sponges aid. Uh, better on, uh, papers. Uh, didn't have. The ground was for, uh, decent enough, uh, with the, the way the wind was blowing in my hands. Then on Friday, we had plows out at, at 5:00 a.m., uh, snow that moved in. Uh, and then this week we'll be taking some snow wings, uh, or snow poke wing post operatives to just kind of lighten those up. So when they start waiting and whatnot with these kind of free stall, uh, kind of those soft roads that we get in the spring. So, uh, light those up. And then, uh, last week, um, I sent an email to you guys, uh, planning all. Plans. Dicer that went down, uh, that we had one previously that we had to put a engine in transmission a few back. And so similar, uh, so we. Using kind of savings from the, the snow, less snow we've gotten this year and whatnot. So, and the fuel we haven't had to spend in this kind of snow season, so. Um, and then this Wednesday we'll be starting contract rock. Um, kind of a half step back from what we did last year. Um, looking at doing around 18,000 tons and roughly on 60,000 or 60 miles. Goodness, that's still a thousand. That was way too much, but 60 miles, there you go. All right, uh, and then, uh, I did not receive any bids. I forgot to put that in, uh, um, but did not receive any bids for tearing down the whole shop. Um, I know one of the, I guess, one of the people that come to take a look at the shop, the whole shop to tear down there was. Three balls on the pole. And so they were going to kind of recoup some of that cost. So, um, kind of try to look into it again to see what maybe we can do to try to. Get our guy, we'll probably have to get our guys to do it if we can't get the contractor too. So, um, and then probably sell the steel and whatnot to try to some of our costs, uh, just to start. So, um, and then I guess I got maps for you guys. Uh, I, I think I sent it to you in clear emails, but I'll just for your, I guess for your clarification. I guess, think one other thing was I talked about the cutter on the planes or should be. And so all of our outline shops were through the Arpa funds.
Or money.
Arpa, um, and but that one didn't give in the timeline because the big part, our bidding team was. So that was one that just got, was left up or sold. Take care of, so.
Correct.
Everyone talked about or asking about that dirt road or that.
Yeah, we was at the farm group meeting, Heather and I was the other night. There was a couple complaints from a few, uh, citizens up here in this corner, Ben.
Okay.
Right. There's a dirt road up here.
Yep.
And there water running down into the fields from the ditch side or something. If you can take a look at that, it's up here, right up here in this corner.
Okay.
All right, and there is a level B.
Yes, and a little bit. He said he, like the past contacted county, he sounded like. I don't even take responsibility. So everyone's like, it's not my road. So we need someone to take responsibility for that.
Oh, sorry.
And if it's not, if it's not us, if you could talk to Grundy, like we just need to make sure one of you is going to be responsible for that.
Well, the road.
It's a level B, so it's not plowed. So there's kind of a gap in his map, but I'm here on that same. But that's the ghost speed.
I guess the question. Do you have a contact?
And that one was Bryce Ehlers.
I know.
I don't think we got his number, but Bryce Ehlers is. East Farms, I think, or over there.
I got, and then the other one was, uh, on the south side of Schrader, where the. Big low. Why they.
Blink, blink, we're over.
Road there, where they're approaching onto the, a page for 63, I guess, or the hell would drop off there. Do you think it up?
Is that us or the state, Ben, do you know? That would take care of where comes, uh, shop there.
No, I think that's.
Correct.
That would, that'd be, that'd be us.
Okay, because that's where like Hart will go off and all the Lincoln Road. So if we could get a little bit of rock there, it's just a pretty big drop off, they said. Which makes sense with the traffic that goes through there.
Well, that, that's it.
Um, the other couple things, just Ben did a good study, multiple sources on that dizer, um, piece of equipment that needs the engine and transmission. And it's going to give us zero percent interest and what a six-year warranty.
Yeah, six.
With.
Yeah.
So.
Six thousand dollars. Yeah, six thousand dollars, which that's probably a six year.
Roughly six years. So that was, that was good. Uh, let's kind of worry about that option. Um, question on the contract rock in the north there. What happens if you get a cold snap and some snow? What do you do? I mean, just try to not blade it and like wait so you don't shove it all in the ditch. How does that work? I know contract rock, you can usually get a little bit. And so. So what do we do? I'll get a.
We're cool.
Okay, we, we pick up time off.
Yeah, we have, we have, that's, that's where we're Wednesday.
Yeah. I know it's nice this week, but I just heard the end of March might be cold. I'm saying, what do we do? Could be all spread. We have to lay out there, we have guys taking tickets. That's true for your fantasy.
Yeah. No, we feel like in that case, we don't take trucks out, ungravels, you know, in this kind of timeframe. Because you can't control the wave like, like motivated.
Okay.
Did we ever pass on this? We go. Uh, I do, I did.
Yeah. It was an email.
I, I, I'm sorry. And only other thing is I heard cats real close, so they're looking for their work. So we're, they'll probably work us on the price. Yeah, that's, that's where I have.
Walk them down.
Yes, exactly. Two, two twenty five minutes.
Sounds good. So I got.
Uh, Sheriff Overgrader, how's that go?
These, um, oh, yeah, I guess I forgot to mention, uh, have one of the guy that used to run that blade. Um, he's, he's helping him out this week. Kind of requires office, we're, we're going with him on that. So, um, so if you can.
For how many?
Yeah.
Do you do put on hold? Yep. Up there, if you like.
Hold on.
We point for about the bottom, if you like. Not one of them bother.
Oh.
It's only on the.
Guy that, uh, used to run that blade.
I think it's for back.
Yeah, he's not on a check. But. Kind of Chris, Chris. Yeah.
So.
I don't know. Basically kind of check, they should run like weeks six. Oh, okay. Do you think kind of help him? What, this week or this week, like today? Oh, okay, so I'm just. Out today.
I do.
Just kind of check. So nobody. My studies, they're gonna, yeah.
Just.
But practice.
Think so, there. All right, thanks, Ben. Appreciate it. All right, next up is discussion possible action to allow treasurer's office to be closed on April 3rd for District One Tranki. Um, Amanda did come in and ask when I think Mark and I were in here that day. Um, so yeah, I'll go ahead and accept a motion if we can get one.
I'll make that motion, all second.
All right, got a motion in a second, discussion. Um, they, they are going to carpool there. It's, it's just one day, so you know, we tried to root travel and things like that. They're going to. Go to the training. Uh, so yeah. All right, all in favor?
Aye, aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Let's go to next one. Discussion possible action to approve temporary liquor license for Laurel's courthouse. I don't see.
Yep, I put that on me. That'd be great. Okay, so it is a temporary liquor license from this Laurel courthouse. It is for March 14th, just one day, and they're doing a fundraiser for East Marshall out of Pilgrim Heights.
I'll make a motion that we accept this, so.
Okay. All right, got a motion in a second, discussion. All right, all in for a sec?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. All right, this one we leave as kind of a standing item, so discussion possible action of hiring freeze exemptions. Uh, we do have one this week. Um, that we current here and for a act list. And then, um, they had already posted it, had already interviewed, they had a recommendation. Uh, you know, the conservation was one that we were cutting their budget sum for next year. And we pretty much left it with Curtis. Does he want a naturalist or does he want to take some budget cuts? So, um, my assumption is him and the board would like a naturalist. Um, so I would say we let them, you know, we kind of manage how much funds they get and they can manage what they want to do with their conservation. Uh, board and, and areas there. So, uh, I'll take a motion.
So.
Second.
Second, all right, got a motion in a second. Any discussion on this naturalist position being held?
Only thing I want to say is the naturalists is there, that's their public face of their. Conservation, so it's kind of a, I believe it's kind of a must have for them, so they get that person out there.
Yeah. I agree.
States, schools.
Yep.
All that stuff's up here.
Yep.
That's all I want to say.
Gets people to know that it's out there, to bring people in and we're getting powder creek filled up. And it'd be good to, I think there's going to be kayaks that they can rent and so the more kids get out there and people, it'll help to, to get people out there. So, all right, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Um, discussion and approve of claims. Um, I think everybody's seen them. Let's first get a motion in a second and then we'll go into some discussion.
That we're. Plays.
It'll be on a motion in a second. Um, for discussion, Karen.
Got you, so can you give us that total there? David would be.
The current total is five, I'll just give you the numbers. Five, one, five, comma, nine, four, zero, point, one, one. Five hundred fifteen thousand, nine hundred forty. And.
So. Four hundred thousand dollars for they would like to transfer that total into another account that they have. It's their landfill gate fees, I believe. Um, we've talked to David Sherwood, out of input landfill, and he is willing to not do that claim so that we can keep that in there. Keep getting the interest for the county until later on. If this, when, this fiscal year, next fiscal year, then do that transfer that he's wanting. I could not cancel that claim out of that total because of our software. I contacted Tyler, they're unable to do it because of an upgrade they did. They have their developers working on it to get that fixed in our software. So if you guys could approve that full amount today and then I will void the check, so the check will not get cashed. So the money will still be sitting where it's at.
So you're asking us to approve total, I read off.
Correct.
And then at some point in time it'll show.
As soon as we cut the checks, we'll void that check.
Yeah, so after that. We'll prove the whole amount. And David Sherwood, I talked with him Friday, he's very willing to leave that money in there. It was pretty common, the landfill, it's their money that they keep here and they pull it in, pull it out, things like that. But, um, he's even willing to put more money in there to help us right now since our financial situation. So he's going to meet with the landfill commission, uh, the 13th, I think they meet. And so we could make around eighteen to thirty thousand a year if they keep six hundred thousand, two million dollars in that account. We'll go back into our general basic, which we're, that's been our short account, you know, that was a pretty low one. So all the interest, yes, the interest is what I'm talking about is if he leaves that money with team accounting, we give that interest off of it. It's around that eighteen to thirty thousand, depending how much they put in there. So appreciate the landfill helping us out there. And yeah, if we can, any bit helps, I know for what we, we, you know, have for total money, it's a little bit, but. So, uh, the discussion on any of the.
Just, just clarification.
Yep.
We're approving this amount, but that, that money is not leaving our account, it's staying there, still drawing interest. Correct. I'm like.
Thank.
Heather, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Why would you approve the check? Why wouldn't you just say you're not going to approve that?
We would, we would like to do that, but our, since we already inputted the claim, can't cancel it out because of the software issue right now.
Typically we could, right? It's a new issue.
Right.
Is what Karen said.
Right, because usually we'd love to just cancel it, not have to issue the check, but unfortunately.
Me, it doesn't make sense. You approve the check, you're gonna.
Correct, I, I totally agree, however, I can't cancel it because of our software issue.
Okay.
Yep, thanks, Richard.
Karen. What was that four hundred thousand for again?
Uh, so the landfill, so the landfill, like they, they have.
What specifically?
For gate fees. So they charge everybody for their gate fees when they go in, so that. The gate fee.
Oh, gate fee.
Yep, so they have all this money sitting there from their gate fee.
Yes.
They usually transfer that into a different sample.
Yeah, and they don't, they don't have to do that. It's just something that they typically did, but they could help us out.
And what do they normally do with that money?
I don't know.
With this.
Well, cup gas next week or on the 13th, when he's there.
Oh, it's actually this week.
So, yeah, it is already the 13th.
Um, yeah, I'll find out.
Yeah, we'll find out how that works. So.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. All right, got a motion in a second and discussion, any other discussion? I'll pick a sec. All right, aye. Opposed? Motion fastest? Uh, let's see, we're back into the second round of public comments. We'll open up public comments now, if anyone has any public. Karen, go ahead.
I have a question, um, she cannot pick up in these figures.
Okay.
Cancel this.
Yeah.
Decision.
Yep.
Which we are.
Yep.
Why are we not cutting that for right now?
So what we did is we're cutting a budget to the conservation. So we cut, um, the one hundred and fifty thousand for next fiscal year is what we're roughly thinking. And so it's up to them to decide what to do. So conservation's kind of on their own, where we give them their budget, but they decide what to do with it. So they have a board, it's fully staffed now with five people. Uh, so that's their decision. If they want to not do this, to do a naturalist, they kind of can decide. So we decide how much they get.
So what happens if they hired them, they looked for a list, then four months from now they come back in because they ran out of money and they want more money? Then we get it.
Yep, I guess we'll discuss it at that point.
That's very well.
Things happen. That's, yeah, once it's budgeted in there.
Yeah, they got them. Yeah, they should have it, yeah, yeah. Yeah, thanks, Karen. What else?
More questions, uh, uh, how long will your work session last?
It's more for the budget. So what we're going to do is, um, last Monday, we went through the general supplemental and the girl services. We went through every single line item, tried to estimate what our any fund balance would be so we could come up with levies. We did not get to general basic. Obviously, general basics are one that we've been short on and that's very long. It's, you know, all these offices here and, you know, sheriff, attorneys. It's a lot of lines to go through. So, um, yeah, I mean, at least we're going to get done here early and I, I don't know, maybe one or two hours. It just depends. We, we punch every single number. I mean, I think Monday we were here for four hours to do the budget, uh, to go through those two smaller accounts. So it's hard to say, but we got to know where we're at, especially on that one where we're supposed to be going in the negative, which we're trying to get us to break even or be slightly above that. Um, just to. So I have the long today, but primarily general basic fund is what we need to look at unless we have any, any of the board has anything from the last two that we did or Karen to go over.
So that is open to the public.
Correct, yep.
Good.
Open to the public, yep.
I got one other question, uh, concerning the hiring.
Yes.
What are you guys' criteria as far as asking for a background check?
Yeah.
Any employee hired?
Oh, you guys, it's Karen or Michelle, it's usually, isn't this job specific or is it on all of them? I know that obviously Sheriff and, you know, the, uh, Defense Department, I know those are.
Checks are done, depends on the position they'll be holding.
The cleaning services, we want to make sure that, you know, background checks are good there. We decided to choose another cleaning service, but yeah, so jobs of specific, it sounds like, yeah.
Okay, okay, I know you guys said you set a criteria, what you're looking at.
Yeah, we're, I mean, we're, we'll definitely bring that up to Paul and these gelatin. We're having three times out of all of our stuff.
And put this board out.
Yeah.
Just one of checks.
Yeah, appreciate it, yeah, it's good to.
Hey, you already posted for a new cleaning service or how did that thing handle right now? I just got brought up.
Dirk, Dirk is putting it out there, has he actually got it?
Um, we brought it back from Paul and he said it does not need to go in the paper. So I think as long as everybody else is okay, we're just going to post it online and.
Okay, it'll be posted online.
To our piece of cleaning services that he's aware of.
Yep. Okay. Yep. Correct. Anybody else? Laura Wilson from Denver. David's gotten a lot of quotes, but I think till we get our IT person, correct?
So I did not hear your question. Was it about the loopholes?
Thursday, it was Friday. Friday with the installers and we're, we needed, need some information on first. And tomorrow, when the IT people come here, it's a closed session, but they've already agreed to discuss with me and Michelle about what we need. To move forward. So long story short, when they came and audited everything, not on top of the IT people, I'm talking about the phone people area. They came and audited our equipment. It was, which was not known that we did not have power over the ethernet. Uh, and that was discovered by the IT team where they came here to do our audit, the one we asked for. We have to come up with a a means of making that power. There's three different ways. Uh, wall bu- wall plugs, uh, injectors, which basically inject the electricity needed, the the voltage need. To our phones or switches with switches that have P O E built into them. When the team's here tomorrow, we're going to have them help us go through and look at what options would work best, what options would be the most inexpensive. And still provide us the the service long term. So long to to answer the question, the phone system will be cheaper than what we're paying now. So that's where the costs is gonna come from. So we're already budgeted for it. Uh, it'll be cheaper and it'll be all out of the auditor's office. Right now, everybody is buying or paying for their own services, computers and phones and everything. All that stuff's gonna be going through the auditor's office. So we have. Uh, one, one person to talk to, one place to check and make sure that everything is working. Fine and we're not spending too much money. Did I answer your question? Okay, more to come after long.
Yeah, and what he's talking about tomorrow, we have a closed meeting with IT again. Um, they're ready to blow for the fifty days. So we want the public to know about if it's, you know, things with. Security and stuff like that. So we have that tomorrow at ten AM. Um, so we'll obviously be in an open session and then go into a closed session with them and then. Come out, we'll take, you know, likely any action, but this will be the final report out. They'll give us actual dollar values. So we're thinking it should be good cost savings cuz if you get IT for eighty five to ninety five thousand dollar salary, we're paying a hundred and eighty thousand a day. We're hoping there's that.
Not a day.
Sorry, not a day, but per year, we're paying a hundred and eighty thousand roughly and outsourced. And so, um, we're hoping that we can have that extra money, that the IT can have an actual budget. We're, okay, we need this many new computers this year. We need this server. We need, you know, they can just manage everything. Everyone comes to them, maybe certain times of year, they they all put their. Need list or he knows with their needless, you know, so. It'll be someone driving the ship that can help us get this technology out of that across and and, uh, just like. But everyone right now has their own line items too, outside of the phones for all their different, you know, office supplies, computers. So yeah, more to come on that. So we'll get that posted hopefully soon here.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Public comments? Alright, let's go ahead and close public comments and I again a motion to adjourn.
So Luke.
Alright, meeting's adjourned. We do, as Richard mentioned, we have a budget work session that we're gonna do here coming up here. So anybody wants to stay? Otherwise, have a great day. So everybody. Yes, nine of you.